All right, 6:30. We'll call the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee on March 20th to order. Do you have the role?
Gene Bowen.
Here.
Gene Fox.
Here.
Sherri Darren.
Here.
Margaret Clark.
Derek Gracia.
Here.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Bill Sanquist.
Yes.
Late came and see anybody else recording the meeting?
Any comments?
Thank you, welcome. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I believe July with my strength and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
All right, open the floor to public participation. Anybody? Seeing none. To acceptance of minutes of March 6th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Renee, under four acceptance of minutes, my vote was abstained. I wasn't there before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did see something that was Miss Dogen here that I forgot. Somebody made a motion and her name's wrong. I'll find it and show it's just mine.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Doesn't change the status of it. Oh, item 12.
Oh, yes, I got it.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion points? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Or opposed? All right, presentations to the school committee. Mr. Pacico, Mr. Wilson.
All right, so our DECA chapter had a very successful state competition. There were many students who earned medallions for their top three rank in either the test or role plays, as well as many students earning top 10 spots in their category. There are several students moving on who earned top three places in their category to the ICDC conference in Orlando. Those students are Emily Porter, Robert Pacico, and Allison Meyer. Also, the school-based enterprise team who runs our school store is moving on to international competition. They consist of Caroline Lambert, Liam McPhail, and Gillian DeCosta. Tori Laravere was one of seven students who was elected to be a DECA state officer, and the installation ceremony will be held at ICDC. At the Junior Achievement Titan Challenge, ARHS's team of Robert Pacico, Aiden Wilson, and Brendan O'Connor took third place. As a result, each person has earned a $500 scholarship. Chemistry students in Dr. Tate's class engaged in the city watershed sponsored by BSU, part of their STEM Science Outreach Program. You can check out ARHS's Instagram page for the pictures. And ELA MCAS is upon us. All grade 10 students will engage in English Language Arts MCAS on March 26th and 27th. Students take the exam, will have a pre-exam presentation on March 21st, and are reminded that breakfast will be served on the days of the exam. The final varsity standings for sports are basketball boys 14 and 8, basketball girls 19 and 5, hockey 7 and 12, wrestling 3 and 1, track boys 1 and 5, track girls 5 and 1, swim boys 5 and 5, and swim girls 6 and 4.
Rehearsals for the Wizard of Oz are underway by the Upon Acquit players. Save the date for their upcoming performances on April 4th, 5th, and 6th at 7:00 p.m. Cushman Insurance, Arbella Insurance, and Officer Bartholomew are pleased to offer distractology, a program to educate students on the growing issue of distracted driving. Teens are invited to sign up and take it for free. During the challenge, they get a firsthand experience of how distractions interfere with their ability to react on the road, to see hidden hazards, and to avoid accidents. On Thursday, March 21st, ARHS will host its first ever Bristol Palooza with Bristol Community College. Interested students will complete their application processes, schedule placement testing, and work on the FAFSA with the support of BCC staff. All interested students receive a detailed presentation, as well as an application this past week.
He did well, his name came up a lot.
I was gonna say, speaking yourself in the third person, I would say congratulations on that, that didn't go unnoticed for it. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be an exciting agenda if you want to stay.
The distractology van is located right near Red Barn. If you don't have an opportunity, it needs to be here all week. I don't know how many students have been signed up. I didn't want to put the boys on the spot, but been well attended. SRO set that up. It's a great opportunity, no cost.
All right, next on the agenda, Director of Facilities.
Yes, it is indeed my pleasure to introduce the new director starting July 1. Facilities, a familiar face for, well, for us maybe on this side, maybe not for the school committee. A familiar name probably for the school committee, because for some of you that have been on the board, you've heard multiple times, over and over again, different individuals, the athletic director and so forth, and their reports advocating for this individual. So it's my privilege to recognize, to promote from within our organization, a real townie. He's got a little personal and professional history that he might be prepared to share, but if not, you could probably get it out of him. And certainly my pleasure, and he actually brought his wife as well, we can introduce her as well, but it's my privilege to introduce Mr. Greg Goodwin. Greg is on board effective July 1, so he's resigned from his position effective June 30th, his current position. He's working closely with Mr. Souza right now, the Director of Facilities, on some hires and kind of putting things in place, and obviously meets weekly with our Director of Finance. So a real talent. I'm real thrilled to have him here tonight, and I believe he's gonna say, share a few words and certainly answer any questions.
Well, thank you for the kind words.
Mr. Goodwin, congratulations.
Nice to see you all tonight. As you heard, my name's Greg Goodwin. I do have a little history here, I'll share it right off the start here with you. Like my father before me, he worked for the district for 30-plus years. He started as a part-time custodian on the weekend. I started as a part-time custodian. We both have worked our way up to the position I currently hold, which is the Facility Custodial Maintenance and Ground Manager. I have this opportunity now to move forward, and I'd like to take this moment to thank you all for that opportunity. It's a little overwhelming, it's a lot to take in and feel that I'm here actually. So again, thank you for that. I'm a hands-on guy, and I hope that I can continue to make a difference, because I feel I've made a difference here. And I'd like to think that I'll continue that along my way to do a good job for you folks, and to make you proud, because I'm proud of this school and the town. I graduated from Upon Acquit, so as I walk the halls and see the grounds, a lot of things come back to me. So it feels really good to be able to be here and give back, and to see where it is today at this point in time, and maybe take it further.
Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
That's a nice personal touch from Greg. Greg ran his own business as well for a timeframe, and we're kind of bringing him back, so he's able to incorporate that aspect of it, in addition to some of his mechanical skills. So I don't know if the committee has any comments or questions?
For a part-time job, and it ended up being this, I closed my business down because this actually started to work out well for me, and I stand before you tonight, so.
Any questions?
Well, I just have an anecdotal story.
Probably has a few too.
If you remember last summer, there was some brutally hot, humid weather, and I was driving by the school, and forgive me Greg, but I said, "Who was that crazy person out there in the blocktop, marking the parking lines in this kind of weather?" So I drove the car in there, and it was him. And I yelled at him a little bit, told him to make sure he stayed hydrated, and he guaranteed me that he would, and I came by the next day, same kind of weather, he was out there again doing that. So I think that speaks to his commitment and his dedication, and congratulations, Greg.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
This continues a trend from promoting from within, and I like it. I like the fact that we hire our own talent here, we have talented individuals, congratulations. It's very nice to hear. I appreciate your dedication to the district, your family's dedication to the district. But I also like to hear the trend of, we've been promoting from within, and it's showing other people in this district that we have opportunities to offer here for those folks like yourself that are committed to the district.
Very much so, thank you.
And if I just may add, I don't know if any of the board members, I think what's significant, absolutely Derek, what you share, it's about promoting from within when you have highly qualified people. We had a pretty strict, and Greg knows this, he had a, he came into the conference room with the screening committee, that involved administrators, the union, central office directors, superintendent, and we went through the interview process. So, you know, we felt, and we felt good about it, but it was unanimous. And that's, and that can be, with all respect to internal candidates, that sometimes can be challenging, right? To go up through the regs and gain the respect of all those individuals, and it was across the board. And we knew, we thought that coming in, that could confirm, and Greg confirmed that through the process, but I think it does bode well for the organization, and we're thrilled to have him on board.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, it should be a smooth transition, stop it, they don't know.
He's already, he's already been involved, and we have, as, and Greg maybe can speak to this, we've got to now backfill his position, because he was the groundskeeper for the entire campus school. We've got a maintenance position to fill.
Correct.
In the process of doing that, you feel we might have somebody in town that might fill that position as well. But he's got, you know, we got some staffing things that he needs to address right away, and he's been involved, and they work closely. I think they had their meeting today, as a matter of fact. I know they've been meeting weekly, the director, current Director of Facilities, and Mr. Goodwin and Ashley as well. Greg, thanks. Would you like to introduce your wife while you have the microphone one time?
Absolutely, this is my biggest support system right here, this is my wife Laura.
Hi, Laura. Thanks for watching. We've been watching for a few years.
So I, if you, I'm gonna steal Mr. Clark's praise, talk about anecdote. So when I shared with Mr. Goodwin the fact that Mr. Higgins was here last week, he almost to a T said, "Yes, I know that. My wife and I watch the school committee meetings, and so I know that for a fact," and he talked about what the expectations were, so he had a little prep as to what he, what was gonna come forward. I, I'm not gonna speak to your social life if you guys are watching the school committee meetings, I'll leave that one alone, but.
Well, now we know who two of the four people that watch.
That would be the good ones.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, moving on to old business. Class size transportation.
I don't know if the press is realizing that it was not in your packet, but it was sent electronically to you, is the most recent bus update. I really don't have a tremendous amount of information in relation to class size and transportation. I will speak a little probably to class size when we get into the budget. We continue to monitor that. There's not a ton of changes when you're talking about a February-March timeframe. Really, most of the enrollment conversations in class size we'll have available for the next meeting are really as we look at FY '20 projections. This is the most recent update. Originally, we had all the months together, but it was a little confusing, so I just asked to simply just to provide this most recent month. We continue to monitor this, and we continue to take a look at our pilot as it relates to the apps and things with some of our administrators, so we're hoping to roll out some exciting new things real soon with transportation. I don't have other items, other than when we get to the budget, there may be some conversation regarding FY '20, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions regarding transportation or class size at this time.
Any questions from the board? The only question I have is, we're gonna follow the same process we did last year, where we're gonna collect all enrollment as it is, with changes, submit that to the bus company so they could read.
Same timeframe, so we have that done in June, correct. Yep, that is the timeline, with our data, people will do that. We have not heard any, any comments or any negative feedback in relation to the change that we made at Aswamsen to address that additional bus route too. So they're providing that route for our aftercare program. Was able to take some numbers, so everything, all my comments with the director, Elise Pacico, and the principals, that seems to be going smoothly. So that was a nice addition. It will be something we'll carry over potentially to next year as well.
Moving on, 6D FY 19, oh, sorry.
Just a quick question, the dedicated bus for the after, um, school program, is that bus 18 in Lakeville?
It is, it is bus 18, I believe.
So we're looking at about 43 riders in the afternoon. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on, budget status report?
Very brief, I've included our standard budget report for our school committee meetings. We're still on target, monitoring utilities, the weather is changing, so we will hopefully be switching out of the heating mode. Hope besides that, if anything comes up, I will let the committee know.
Question, I don't know, I'm looking at, how have we been making out with the boiler situation at Grace?
So we repaired it, the crack. Further on in my reports.
Okay, we can get there.
We can get there.
I'm skipping ahead.
So my second item tonight is the Aswamsen statement of interest. We attended the Board of Select meeting in Lakeville, and they voted for us to complete the statement of interest last week. Bob Souza has updated the statement of interest, and we're in the process of bringing all the information together to submit it. It was a two-to-one vote, and we are on track to get that submitted before April 12th.
So it's already up electronically, we haven't submitted it yet, there's some signatures that need to be signed off electronically, including the chair. We jumped a little bit ahead, Ashley did, to get Steve, so Steve had to be set up to sign off at the end, so he got a little anxious that I missed something, but we were just really putting him on. Greg Goodwin has been part of that process as well, working with the director, because Bob's handled that. The good news is, we've talked about, the vast majority of the work had already been put together, really, it was just an update of that statement of interest. So we'll be good to go for the April 12th deadline.
Any questions on the statement of interest?
We did have school committee, multiple representatives at that meeting as well.
Definitely didn't go the way we thought it would be, but hey, we're moving forward.
That's right.
Moving on to FY '20 budget discussion. We'll start with the directive we gave from last meeting based upon the first part of the budget. You wanna give us a little bit of update on that?
Sure, do you wanna go over the articles first? It's just easy to kind of go through and go to the next.
Yep.
Just as an update, we had to submit the articles for the Lakeville warrant last week. I submitted two articles. One was for an engineering study for the Grace boiler. We'd like to get someone in to see if it needs to be completely repaired or completely replaced. We don't know what the answer is right now, so we want to get some funds allocated to us to get that engineering study. And then from there, the second article was to either do the repair or the replacement based on the engineering study. So I submitted that to Lakeville. This week, we met with the town of Free Town's Board of Selectmen. They have suggested, suggested to us that we put on the special town meeting, the amount for the security for FES, where we gave back the donation. They're saying, put an article on to be voted on for them to pay for it for FY '19, and then an additional article for phase two for FY '20. They just opened up the warrant process, and they have a different template than Lakeville does, so I'm now in the process of getting all that information together to submit to Free Town.
Is everybody clear? So going back to this, the first phase one, the project that was complete, which was just under $10,000, their, their request is that we place that as a separate special article at the special town meeting, and they would approve that. The second phase of that was if we wanted to include phase two, they did not give consensus, and how we would have to handle that is we'd have to put it on at the regular town meeting as a separate article, and that would address future work potentially to be done this summer.
So Free Town, I would put forward three articles for the town meeting this spring.
That's not what they said.
So the first part, the one about the boiler pieces, that has been sent to both towns, is that correct?
Yes.
So we checked that bar?
Both town administrators have that information, correct?
Free Town, I do need to resubmit on their template, but they do have noticed that we're sending that.
We just want to make sure that both towns are getting the same information for that.
Yes.
As far as the special town meeting article, I think we're all in agreement to move forward with that. As far as the second article, I think that's probably a discussion of the full board about how we want to proceed with that, or adjust that, or how we want to, how we want to proceed with that in general, so.
So that, that second phase of security was just under $10,000, that would address the additional 16 cameras, but there was also a conversation on our end that we talked about the rental agreement and the fact that $60,000 came in. My brief conversation with council, with committee chair, but probably for the larger board, was, do we want that second article to maybe include other items specifically? You haven't had a chance to have that conversation, but at the minimum, we can include the security.
Does that make sense to have that on a future meeting to figure out that second article?
We did provide those, that, those numbers, Ashley did provide those numbers to the Board of Selectmen of Free Town, so they know, knew exactly what the dollar amounts were.
Got it.
Even in advance of the article.
Do we know Free Town's town meeting date yet?
It's the same.
Same date, June 3rd.
Explain it that way.
I think they do.
Well, typically, Free Town always is that first Monday in June, that's why they do that, and Lakeville sort of goes back and forth, but, okay.
I will say.
In your packet, I did include a quote from one of our vendors for an entire replacement of the Grace boiler room. It is a large ticket item, and that's why I do believe the engineering study would be kind of the first step in the process.
They were able to secure that, because they're, the vendor's been doing a bit of the work, so they provided that information in advance potentially of potential future.
Any questions for Ashley before we dive into the budget?
If the Smith boilers that crack, and we're gonna replace them with Smith boilers?
So that's what the quote is for. Again, I do strongly feel as though an engineering study should be done. We had to ask the vendor numerous times to give us a quote. They were hesitant to do that, because it is such a large scope of work that will need to be bid out, that this quote is only worth so much right now.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to look closer at that, your voice.
Any other questions? Do we want to address the director from last meeting about the teachers before we dive into the other section?
So at your place, there was a document off to the side, these are the changes that have been made to the budget since our last meeting. It's just a summary view. Has about four lines with the account number at the top. So we did receive our insurance information from Maya, there is gonna be a reduction of insurance for FY '20. So that savings I took and reallocated it through different items in the budget. One of those items was putting back those two Grace teachers that we discussed at the last meeting. As it shows, the February 6th, it was a reduction to the budget of $101,000. You'll see the March 8th number is zero, because that number was in the salary line above it in the budget, so if you do reference back to your book. The offset I have put into transportation for special education right now, we've been doing some more detailed projections, and I do think we're going to need more funds in that line item.
So the board obviously has to take an action formally. We have a budget hearing, public hearing, April 3rd. These numbers will be reflected in that presentation. So if you recall, there's some slides that as relates to health insurance costs, we'll have to make those adjustments, salaries, we'll talk to the teachers, and those things will be reflected. But per the directive, the timing was nice in that we, we received information in relation to the health insurance, so we were gonna address the needs of, of the committee at this point without having to cut services or programs at this stage. No change to the bottom line of the budget at this time.
Any questions on the budget adjustment? Moving on to FY '20 budget book. Last meeting, we left off with section 10, which was the end of the five buildings, so to speak. Moving on to the, the rest of the budget, we'll follow the same format, just to see if we get everybody's questions in there, with the first one being technology. Mr. Madiar is gonna answer all technical questions.
We did have Mr. McNamara here earlier today, right, with our policy group, so.
I will, just to give a little bit of color, one of the discussions at the policy meeting a little bit was, part of any future funding for technology is require that plan. He has committed a timetable that by the end of this school year, there will be a, a working draft of a multi-year plan for technology, including replacements and upgrades. We were very clear that they need to also include resources in that to support it. And the goal is by the first school committee member of the year, maybe first or second, for that, that there would be a final draft that included all numbers, what have you, so that way there can be a discussion from the full board about how we potentially funding, next steps, what have you, for that. And the thought is, over the summer, there would be some outside involvement as far as feedback on that particular plan, so. Any questions on the technology part? Mr. Gracia?
Actually, more of a comment. Did you give up your computer, Rick? Superintendent Technology's down $11,000, so yeah.
So theme to the budget, we were realigning accounts to show where actual expenditures are.
Yeah, I kind of figured, just joking, I didn't think he was very technology savvy.
He went back to the flip phone.
But here, here's my comment really, the tech budget's down $13,000. Now, we, we made a really concerted effort here to, to, you know, make technology a priority. Do we feel that a reduction in this line item is gonna be sufficient to cover the directive of where we headed with technology?
So in the previous years, we've had lease agreements for our computers, and that has ended as of FY '19. So going into FY '20, we do not have that lease payment that we've had the last five years. We only have the lease on the telephones. And with discussions with the Director of Technology, we've maintained the maintenance lines in his budget, and that he's going to start replacing those outdated computers with that line.
With that lease line, so in effect, you're not gonna use the whole thing, you're gonna use portions of it over time?
Right, because we don't have that large buyout payment that we had this year.
Yeah, right, okay. That makes sense.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to student services.
Would you like, I don't know if there's specific questions, certainly.
I'm sure there's gonna be several, so.
I got a few, I don't, I don't want to hog all the airtime here, so. The, the increase in contractual services, $152,000, what's that in relation to?
Again, it's realigning the accounts.
The realignment, okay, that's all I need to know. I'm, I'm sure a lot of these are realignments and/or offsets that you've brought the line item back to full fund, and there's an offset for it, because that's not how the budget was done in the past. Transportation, what's driving those transportation costs? Obviously, that's not just the realignment, there's, there's increased cost there, and it's substantial. So what's driving that?
That's the outsourcing. It is more expensive to outsource the amount of routes that we did through vanpool. We had a, so there's two parts of that, outsourcing, we can rely upon the van drivers to be there, we're not worried about our employee, if they're sick or not, getting us up. We know that a van is gonna show up every day for our students. However, it does come at a cost. The contracted rate, and it's universal throughout the state, it's not just here at Free Town, Lakeville. It's high to have out-of-district transportation.
So was that just miss, missed when we, when we thought we were doing this cost savings by outsourcing? Was, because we talked about consolidating, those, those outsourced have been able to consolidate some of the routes, having multiple, and gaining some efficiency of it. It doesn't sound like any of that efficiency happened. So is it the efficiency, or is it just the rate that's driving it? Or is it both?
It's a little bit of both. We have looked into, into this as the school year's progressed. We're bringing actually a route that we had outsourced initially back into district. We have a driver who can take on that route and those children. We also just have a student changes location, things of that nature. Unfortunately, Les and I were not here when we transitioned into the outsourced, so we're just kind of learning as we were going from the fall, and now we have a better handle on it now come the spring, and that's why, when I did those budget changes, I did add additional monies to the out-of-district transportation.
Are we gonna consider any other cost saving, are there any other cost-saving mechanisms we could look at in this area?
Well, and keep in mind, the thought process at the time was that we would save on employee, right, salaries, that we would not need the drivers and benefits.
Well, and capital, the cost of the vehicles, you know, replacing the vehicles.
The maintenance of the vehicles. So although we are surplus, and I don't think we've seen it negate the, the rising cost of the rate at this time.
Well, yeah, one of the things I think we should really look at is, we're seeing the cost go up, but we should look at what the cost of replacing the vehicles are, so we do a real comparison here. We're not seeing that. We're not seeing that right now. So it's looking like this number's a lot higher than we anticipated, but we should be looking at an apples to apples comparison so that way we understand what the real differences-
If all these routes that we're spending significant money involved our vehicles, we would be spending significant amount of money replaced.
More, that's why I think the apples to apples comparison needs to understand. We thought we were going to save money, but I think we're, the understanding of what saving money is, is different. Saving money is, is if we ran it the way it's being run, then technically, yes, we are saving money. So that's why I think there's been a little bit of language missing in that.
And it's true. This year, we've had also quite a few expenditures to maintain our vans. Our vans are aging and we did not buy new vans to begin with. We bought these secondhand and we've had to put a lot of money into them to maintain them.
Can you give us a quick analysis at some point of what that would have looked like had we, I'm not looking for nickel to nickel, but some kind of analysis, because I think it's going to be quite different and I think that'd be helpful for the committee to understand, say, hey, that was a good decision. The 125 that's in there, that's the reserve money from the towns, correct?
It is.
The reduction in FTEs, is that related to van drivers?
No, that is specifically to the high school. There was a reduction of one teacher at the high school and three paraprofessionals.
Is that because of people aging out?
That was realignment to the middle school with that additional subsuffer teacher and then the need for those paraprofessionals are not going to be there in FY '20.
And then I'm going to be, the last question I have, there seems to be a spike in multiple disabilities doubling. It's, you know, rates are rising drastically. There's also a rise in learning disabilities and, well, a decrease in learning disabilities and emotional disability. Those are down a little bit. Are those people going into multiple disability categories? Is that what's happening with them, those individuals?
That's a good question. So I asked the same thing of the staff. I think it's more, it was more a coding issue. For example, if a student had a social emotional disability plus a learning disability, someone might select multiple, but really, you know, the state wants you to go from the primary disability category.
Okay. But that doesn't explain why the multiples increasing, because the multiples increasing, it's doubling year after year right now.
Well, we've had, we've had a great, we've had increases over the past in all numbers, so those would be increasing, but yes, I think it's the way that they're coding that. I have asked them to go back to a more primary.
Okay, so you're saying they were coding them more that way. Now, we may see that now go back into-
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
These numbers are from the October 1 reports that are provided to the state and I use these numbers in conjunction with Liz because they're pointed to, like, the state has these numbers, so if we ever needed to reference them or have conversations, we had a point in time. But it is generated by an individual and industry.
It still is a little concerning because when you look at those multiple numbers, they're very high. I mean, you're talking, it went from 12 one year to 24 to 44. That's three years' been and that, so that's concerning of, you know, the services that, I'm not saying we, you know, we have, we've got to provide those services, but that's a growing population to the, when we looked at the last meeting, we saw, you know, some, the special or the high needs group increasing over time, but it didn't look, you don't see the individual categories here. When you see certain categories, boy, they jump really out of the paper at you and you've got to ask your question, yourself the question, what's happening, you know?
So, and as you know, there's been a number of different people who have been responsible for inputting and that's been, that has changed quite a bit.
Okay.
So I just mentioned, you know, in coming up with the budget book, that did absolutely stand out for me and I adjust it with our administrators.
For the behaviorist position that wasn't funded, how much are we spending in contracted services for that now?
I believe it's approximately about $105,000.
For the contracted?
For the full contracted behavioral services through Bradley Hospital.
Okay. Is that because of the services provided across the campus and scheduling or would it make more sense to have someone on our staff to do that?
Yes, so what, you know, what we have done, I had initially put in for district BCBA and a behaviorist, but the behaviorist was cut, so we're going to be reallocating the contract, contractual dollars into a position, which will, which will be savings as well and it will be better for the community and the students as well.
Are there other services that are contracted now that could potentially have some cost savings with them if we had staff?
That was not apparent as it was, as I went through the budget numbers to prepare the budget. We look at certain contractual related service providers. That is actually helpful for us to be on contract for when we have overflow and need to sort of tap into that. But there is not a line item that I can look at and say, oh, we should bring that back or I would have, I would have recommended that.
I was actually going to ask about the behaviorist as well. So just so I'm clear, there is a BCBA in the district currently or there is not?
We currently contract for behavioral services through Bradley Hospital. So there's a doctoral level psychologist and then there is a behavior specialist, I think, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's been trained with Bradley and has many years' experience. And she's been here a number of years as well.
One of the beautiful things about letting Derek go first, because he asked most of the questions.
Yeah.
Yes, it does work out well. So going back to the behaviorist, and now I'm going to forget my question here. So do we have somebody on staff right now?
Not on staff, we just contract.
In our schools right now, working with teachers contracted, in our schools now?
Yes.
And do they do all five schools?
Yes.
And is it one person?
It's a behavior specialist and then a supervisory level, PhD level psychologist.
And the psychologist also is here?
She is on site one day a week. She's on the campus one day a week.
And you feel as though that's enough? I say that because of what Derek was saying with these numbers.
No, I feel, I feel we need a district BCBA, which is why I recommended switching over the contract to have a full-time BCBA on staff five days a week with us.
So just to, are we doing that? So I just want to make sure.
That portion of it.
So is this, under proposed, sorry, got to dumb it down to my level here. We have a proposed behaviorist that was not funded.
Correct.
Is that what's coming into the district now, which is taking out a contracted service? Am I hearing that correctly?
No, so we, we're taking the contracted Bradley Hospital.
Yes.
Dollars and we are getting a full-time district BCBA.
So it's still be contracted and it won't be on our staff?
It will be on our, the BCBA will be on our staff.
So we're paying for the employee costs and all that?
We will be, yes.
Got it, okay, sorry.
Which will be a savings.
Psychiatric services, there's a $20,000 item in there, which previously we hadn't seen. Is that new or is that a realignment of the budget?
No, there had been, my understanding that, that was in some prior years. I have, you know, limited historical, but when I looked at those numbers, that seemed to be a standing number and Ashley would certainly have that better.
When I looked at it year over year, I saw nothing and then I saw $20,000 in this year in the budget.
Which line are you looking at?
Let me find it here for you. You can go on, I'll let you know, it's in here somewhere.
I do see the psychiatric services that we were talking about.
Yeah, it's $20,000. There wasn't anything in previous years, what?
So actually, it was, it was $20,000 FY '19 was the budget and then I reduced it to $10,000 based on the prior year information. Looked like we were roughly around the $10,000 mark, so I reduced that line item and reallocated it throughout the special ed or the student services budget.
Any other questions?
Just to go back to the BCBA, so is that included in the budget here already?
Yes, you don't see it because it was taken out of, was naturally taken out of the contracted dollars.
Okay, but so where was it put back in?
So up at the top, you'll see contracted services to Bradley. There's a $53,000 line that was broken out. There's also a secondary line, I'm sorry, it's in the occupational physical therapy section, which has some of the money in there. Unfortunately, in prior years, it hasn't been in one location, it's been in multiple. So as we start to realign the budget year after year, it'll be a little bit clearer. This year, it's still the two places.
So that line item will include the employee cost too? I just want to make sure we're including both sides of that in that, so that was in there. Okay, perfect. Any other questions?
Just for the clarification, I'm sorry to keep, so that's now sort of, to make it simple, a salaried employee position as opposed to a consultant type relationship that escalates over.
Exactly.
Based on case law.
Exactly.
So that's a fixed number that we'll have next year for behaviorists?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry, I was confused by that. Any other questions, Student Services?
Just a comment, I guess it's a little concerning. Just hope we have enough to support the population.
Yeah.
Well, I think the overall, there's two things. One, if you talk about the line item, the transportation one is concerning.
But I asked that last week, yep.
I don't, I would hope that we're getting our arms around that. I think that we assume that it would at least be flatlined. We wouldn't get any savings in year one, but it seems like we're underfunded, which is a little bit concerning. But I think overall, the picture of how do we fund special ed in general, right? So there's a circuit breaker chart in here, you know what I mean? So I think that there's a bigger discussion for this committee on what is the strategy on funding special ed in general, because there are these ebb and flows that we won't understand, right? And that's why we have that side of the table to understand. We just need to figure out how to fund that.
If you had to pick a section of this budget that's the most volatile and changing day to day, just we're there. Liz and I just had a conversation today regarding, I'm not going into too much details regarding a student who's, who's been identified in this budget where we may be moving some costs and, and the reality of just the way the whole process is playing out fluidly, things could change in the next couple of weeks regarding this, this individual program and child and monies would go somewhere else, which to people who don't do this for business are going to question that. Why, why would that be at budget time? And, well, the reality is that's when some decisions are being made regarding kids and programs and literally, we had that conversation and I think you're hearing a little bit of the example, you know, the backing down of the contracted services and looking to do this and it appears late, it's not. I mean, we could have some change in the coming months. The, you know, the real concern, I think you've hit it right on, is making sure we have enough funding, right, in general to provide supports for kids. I think we're, I think this is a chance to recalibrate in some instances, but also recognizing that in transportation tuition, we've always been, if not underfunded, right there. I'm not sure we're that far off right now. I think we're getting closer, but I think it's, it's why you saw the money shifted from the health insurance savings into that area. And I say that area, special education, transportation specifically, because we may have to make some adjustments as we get closer to the town meeting, within the lines, not necessarily the total amount.
Yeah, I really think our budgeting in this area needs to change and it needs to allow for more, I don't know what the right word is, but we need a bigger buffer. We've seen us move money around in the budget to fund this area because of its volatility. And I'm not saying the budgeting is bad, I'm saying it's just too fine, it's too close. Most of these costs, if they ever change on the way you budget it, it seems like they go up. They never go in the direction down. So I would, I would think that, you know, part of income should look at, how do we actually budget this section and allow for some flexibility, allow for some, I don't want to say fluff, it's the wrong word. But it allows for some-
Keep in mind, districts are, do have a strategy for that. We've chosen not to go that route, which is a stabilization fund specifically identifying special education.
I totally disagree with that strategy right now. There's many reasons for that.
That's why, that's why I prefaced it, Mr. Gracia, but I just, that is, that is a mechanism many districts are using.
Or even using circuit breaker funds.
Well, there's a circuit breaker, right. And I absolutely agree, we could have this conversation for an hour. So there's other mechanisms before I want to hear about stabilization that I want to see done and then we can talk about stabilization, my personal opinion. So, you know, but I, I think in the meantime, those conversations need to happen around this section of the budget. We really need to sort out those conversations so that this, this section of the budget becomes a little, I mean, I hold my breath right now. Every year when I see the budget and special ed, you do a fine job or we do a fine job of nipping it right where it should be, it's too volatile there. There's only increases and, and what happens is when we see those increases, we now have threats to services in other areas of the budget. And so we really should focus on making more meat around this, this area of the budget. That's a bigger conversation, I think, and that's my two cents.
So just to clarify, this, this increase is inclusive of any quote unquote decreases of kids moving out of the district or aging out, right? Which is even scarier because of the fact that it's not shown here, but it is an assumption piece to it. Any other questions from the board on this? I do think that-
Can I ask a question? When you do this budgeting, we have a percentage, and this is just my business budgeting take sense here, we have a percentage of the population that is high needs, special needs. Do we factor in incoming or what new enrollment will look like when we try to make this budget up? Do we anticipate that percentage of the population coming in will have some type of need in order to create these budgets? Because you're really going on a student by student, case by case basis. We have no idea what may move in, what may coming for needs and I almost think that we should have a percentage of that population and that percentage gets added to this budget cost-wise.
So we do look at projections, but they aren't just that, they're projections. It's not a set percentage wise, but we go through, Ashley and I met a number of times, you know, trying to realign the numbers and sort of get everything in the correct category that they need to be. We do build in for projections, but it is-
But we don't, we don't take into account a percentage, right? We don't say that, we're going to anticipate that of all our new students that are coming in, 17% are special education and then, so.
Did you ever apply that type of theory in your past practice?
No.
No.
Don't they always look at historical data? I think you go historically and-
You can look at, you know, town census data to see, you can look at historical data.
It doesn't give you anything to be, it's a good discussion.
How do you predict move-ins? For some reason, this district has a, so. But it is a bigger conversation and we need to figure out a better strategy because obviously, the state is not living up to their end of the bargain, right? So we do need to figure out a better strategy overall or we're going to continue, lack of a better word, liver by paycheck to paycheck and cutting back on other services across the district, which is a pain point.
So one of the things that Ashley and I had discussed in going through this also is when you take the circuit breaker, as you know, in the year you already have the funds, that takes away some of the, you know, unknown in terms of state funding.
Any other questions?
Just that is going to be on the FinCom agenda.
Now, I just have to say though, that this discussion right here has been going on for the beginning of time.
Absolutely, been around.
You folks are saying, I mean, 20 years ago, they were saying the same thing, you know, we can't tell who's going to come in and, and we do have the mechanism and it's town meeting floor. It's a special article on town meeting floor. Perhaps it's not the best, but we need to utilize that if we need it.
Well, in one town, you actually voted separately.
We did.
Because of that.
Yes.
Previous to me being here.
So there is something in place. I wouldn't want the community to listen to this and say, oh, we have nothing in place. There's something in place, it's been going on for 30, 40 years that I know of.
Through the chair, and I know we just have a member of the audience that just stepped up to the microphone, I don't think this committee is in a place to turn away public participation. Is there any way we can allow her to speak?
My only concern is we do, for the budget, we do have a public discussion slated for the next meeting. That would be my only piece for that. Do you have a question or a particular comment about this section?
I have a particular comment about transportation. My name's Crystal Eng. I am CPAC chairperson. Transportation has been awful. I have transported my son back and forth to school because the ramp was broken. Liz has done whatever she could to get that ramp fixed. It has been broken numerous times on the bus. My son has a state-of-the-art wheelchair, which is much heavier than a regular wheelchair. And you can hear it creak as he goes on and creak as he comes off every day. So as a parent, I should not have to transport my son to school, whether or not you pay for, you know, I never put in transportation costs, because I just don't. But I should not have to bring my son back and forth to school because this bus is old. The amount of money that's been put in to fix this bus, I'm sure is just outrageous. So if you want to look at the budget, I would just look at this bus. It's been out of commission, I don't even know how many times, and it's ridiculous, because it just shouldn't be this way. And I know my son is not the only one in the district who has a wheelchair. And it is, I mean, it's a fantastic wheelchair. It's very heavy, it's several hundred pounds. He can stand up, he can lay down, he can, you know, he likes to call it walk, when he stands up straight, and he can go around, and he can talk to his friends, and he can do these things. So when I have to drop off and pick up, I'm also a foster parent, so I also have other kids that I have to take care of, plus doing whatever else in my day. He's my son, will I drop him off and pick him up? Yes. But for public education, should I have to? Because the town is supposed to supply, I'm sorry, supply us with transportation. And, you know, I can't even imagine how much has come out of the budget to fix this one particular bus. Because even today, when Bryce got out of it and the ramp thing didn't go all the way up, I just kicked it, and then it went back up. But it's been fixed, Lord knows how many times, or it's said to have been fixed. One day I went to the middle school for a meeting, and remember I said to you, no, the bus isn't fixed, I saw it, you know, it was broken down at the middle school in the driveway. I said, so I know Bryce won't be going on that bus. So now we have this bus that's, I'm sure, thousands of dollars of money that could have been used for something else, that I think is ridiculous. So.
I appreciate the feedback. I apologize the fact that you have to go through this on a daily basis, and we haven't been able to address that issue.
Well, it's kind of sort of fixed now, but I mean, I can see it breaking down again. And, you know, my son had, when something happened at school and he had to have, his wheelchair was stored at school, we actually had the OT borrow her mother's van, wheelchair van, to bring my son's wheelchair home. And it was like, you know, thank God, Laurie, you know, I really appreciate it, you know, I mean, thank God your parents had this, you know, van that we could borrow. So now we're getting people to do things on their own time, you know, which I think is a lot to ask. It's a lot to ask someone's mother of an employee who has a handicap van to bring my son's wheelchair home. I think, I just think that's a lot. Was it appreciated? Absolutely. But it's just a lot to come up with something like that.
Again, thank you for the feedback. The only thing I would ask is, if we can get an update as far as getting this truly corrected?
Well, I just, well, I would clarify, I'm not so sure I would say truly corrected. For purposes of discussion, though, I'd rather not talk about individual children or families. I appreciate the public input. I think her comment in relation to our conversation about vendor versus our own vehicles is pertinent. I do know we have multiple parents that choose to transport their children, and it does work, so each case has to be taken on an individual basis. We certainly will take certainly what's happened tonight, and I'll be talking to the director.
Yeah, I just want to, let's get the full story, and I hate to have, we're getting multiple repairs and the same thing is not being addressed. But if we can just get an update on that for the future, that'd be very great. But thank you very much for the feedback, we appreciate it. Anything else on, before we move on to? Notice Mr. Goodwin ducked out before we got the facilities.
That was a strategy.
He's going to see that on television when he watches.
He gets this one year where he inherits the budget, right? He knows it starts July 1, so he's taking advantage of that.
Mr. Goodwin. Questions on the maintenance part of the budget? Anybody else want to go first before Mr. Gracia?
Yes, he covers all the bases.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does a good job.
Can we get an FD breakdown over the last five years? I'd just like to see what our staffing looks like over the last five years, because my guess is it's gone consistently down.
Maintenance and custodial?
Yes, yeah. If it's not FD, it's just how many, what the manpower has looked like over the last five years. And I know some of that has come and gone, and there's been times where we haven't had people, and we had the part-time struggle. The security at AES is down 8,000. What's that in relation to?
That's because we did the first phase this year in FY '19, and we do not plan on doing a phase in FY '20.
Okay. Boiler at the high school, I'm getting nervous on all these boiler questions. What's the $15,000 that we're putting in the boiler at the high school?
There are some repairs that we want to do next year.
Really?
Yes.
Is, are they necessary? I mean, I'm assuming they're necessary repairs? Are they going to extend the life of these?
They will.
Okay.
These are in cracks, right? Because.
Not yet.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, there's always the potential, right? And we talked about this throughout the course of the year. We historically have taken monies from other places in the budget to pay for unexpected expenditures, and that's taken us away from the maintenance lines, specifically in facilities. And this year, this budget really does allow for showing what the true cost of maintenance has been over the years, so we're realigning it and also trying to do some preventative maintenance costs to these items.
Okay. I got a feel, Steve and I have had this discussion, it may be true cost, but I still don't think they're the real cost. I still think that that budget is short. Steve would probably agree with me, just because that budget has been the area where we've made cuts. We've protected the programs and services of the district, and we've continually cut maintenance. As much as we're trying to look at this, I can't believe that that budget's even going to be, I'll say adequate.
I mean, it's enough to get us.
I think right after special education, we would agree with you.
Yeah.
It's another area.
So.
But we're trying to kind of make some incremental changes as well, too, and not have it be such a stick.
No, I get it. We have to balance the towns' budgets as well along with ours. And then this is the last question I'm going to ask, I promise all of you.
Sure.
The programs and services, Marlene, you did for us a, the mandates, unfunded mandates last year, you gave us a list of unfunded mandates that continually be, they were once grant-funded, and now the funding's dropped off, but we, are there more this year? Can we keep that a rolling list?
Sure.
Because that's something the community should understand, that's a significant amount of dollars that bleed out of the district over time, and I want to keep a role in tally of that. And we didn't even have you go all the way back, because I think we had, you know, for the benefit of saying, Marlene, we don't want you to go to history, because it would be even bigger than that. I think we should keep on the tabs of that, because there's a story here that, you know, we're asking the towns for money, and the story that we don't want to happen is that, or that, you know, sometimes we've been criticized for that, you know, this is a blank check budget. It isn't. The fact of the matter is, money has rolled out of this district and never made its way back in, and we've had to continually go back to the towns to replenish that money that we've been mandated to keep, because once somebody gave us the carrot and then...
Took it away.
Yeah, took it away for a while, so.
Can we piggyback on that and just ask that?
So I'm done. That's it for me today.
The other one, I mean, I think that's a great idea there, we need that rolling unfunded, but then we also have to look at, as demographics shift, and they are, so we're seeing this ELL, where's the money for that? Zero. So these are the other things we should be looking at, that we're going to have to take out of our budget. Oh, you're welcome. Was that your question?
No, I, these are great questions, but I was just like confused, I'm like, where's program of services in the maintenance part of the budget? But, that's why I was a little bit.
But we had to go there.
No, and I'm not saying we can't go there.
But the boilers should be fixed.
As part of the program of service. Any other questions on the maintenance part of the budget? For me, this is, there's a lot of parts in the budget, but I'm hopeful, and I think I heard you say this, that we're adding more funding to be a little bit more proactive in our maintenance instead of being a break-fix component.
We're trying to be more targeted. Bob and I spent a lot of time during this process thinking about the buildings and things that we could start doing that preventative maintenance year-to-year, not just, oh, this is now broken, let's fix it. I mean, that's all the way from the lights, the windows, everything. And we've added those small amounts, and next year, my hope is to really break it out like I have in some of the other sections of, such as textbooks. We know that this is going to be a new mandate for the next year. I want to say, okay, at the high school, we're going to fix X, Y, and Z, that's our target, as a small maintenance cost, not as a large capital plan like we do with the separate.
Got it, okay. Yeah, it just that, it seems like we're flatlining overall in this, and it's just, it's huge acreage here, five buildings, you know, so it's just more of the factor. So I'm happy to be able to do some preventive and hopefully a going-forward strategy that we're adding more to that instead of just being break-fix, which I think we've been for a number of years. Any questions on maintenance, moving on? The rest of it, the budget really falls into supported materials, I'll say, including revolving funds, what have you. I'll open it up to the rest of the committee on, now you can add your program services, any of those items, that, any particular questions for the administration?
The revolving funds and the grant funds are expenditures we have on a year-to-year basis, so they're good to see and review. If we lose that grant funding, we'll lose those expenses, and we'll have to supplement from the general fund. A lot of our grants do carry salaries here in the district. That's something we'd like to see move into the general fund as we go forward, but it's broken out this year, so you can see that.
Well, that's the good thing about this budget, it's very transparent to see which are offsets, you know, which we didn't have that, so we should be able to see the reduction of grants and what we need to make up for. Anything else on the budget overall?
So I'd like the superintendent to update us on the incoming kindergarten projections. I don't think we've seen that yet.
Yeah, so we just started, just getting in the census information from the towns, I actually reached out to both principals today, and so the projected numbers, so each school has their section with projections, and it's based on some history, but also on kind of what we anticipate. We anticipated, so just, I'll talk Lakeville first, that Swamset, which is, I believe, section?
Six.
The projection was to have five sections for kindergarten for next year. We have six currently. The current projection right now shows 99 students projected in, so that would be in line with that piece right now. That doesn't take into account summer move-ins and those types of things, but one less section, which is what was in your budget book in the front page, would be consistent with the projection that we have to date, which is really early on in the process, right? The 99 census number, typically you deviate up to 10 students typically downward from that number, like candidly, but that doesn't take into account potential summer move-ins. But right now, you'd have a class size of 20, right? If you, or, you know, 20 if you're at Lakeville. When you flip to the next section at, not that we're not paying attention in Lakeville, but paying a little more attention in Freetown Elementary School to the projected numbers, because they seem to be running a little bit higher than we anticipated, and Mr. Ward's quite aware of this. The current census number is just over 100. The initial packet actually is 114, but we're thinking the number's more like 104. As you look at the budget document, first page on Freetown Elementary School, it's showing five sections going to four, similar to Lakeville, one less section. If that were to be a case, and we had only four kindergarten classes, then we have a class size issue. Mr. Ward's aware of that. Right now, the projection would be to maintain five sections. If we were to start school today, to maintain five kindergarten sections, and we would have five sections in K, we would have four sections in one and five sections in two. And that literally was the conversation I had with him today, projecting out. Keep in mind that our K number right now is 91. So I just reduced first grade, so if you do the quick math, there are four sections, one less section in first grade, would still maintain a 22, 23. Ideal, no, right, for first grade, but if you balance that with existing staff, that's where we're at. We're not talking additional staff. We're going to have to monitor this week-to-week, day-to-day type of situation. It is very early on in the process. I will tell you this, the principals are all over this, are on top of this. In fact, typically, in true principal fashion, what I get as a superintendent, because I was on the flip side of this, the principal for 10 years, my principals always let me know when those numbers are going up, and they come to me because they're concerned about space, class size, and those, rightfully so. But I always think those numbers are a little inflated early on in the process, right? So I ask them, what's your plan, what thought process? I literally spoke to both principals and their support staff, and they provided that information. It is really early on, it's March, so I don't, at this point, I am not recommending additional staff at either building, but I think we need to watch it close. And the summer's, the summer's the scary part, right? It's that, once the budget's been approved and you kind of established, all of a sudden, July and August, we've had some, you know, 10 students or 12 students, and depending upon when they show up, what grade level they show up, then you run into issues. At this point, we feel comfortable that we've addressed the needs, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So yes, I'm glad that you brought that up, because I'm wondering, do we keep any data on how many children register, we'll say in May, how many in June, July, August? August is always the big one, I know. Do we keep any of that data year-to-year, so that we, I know it absolutely is going to fluctuate.
We can acquire that, I mean, the principals do, and usually that's their push. I mean, they're usually saying to me, listen, this is the number in July 1, but we know, I'm not so sure there's a trend or a pattern to do that.
I don't know there would be either, but it would be nice to be able to sit here next year and say, you know, last year we got 10 new kids in kindergarten.
The one thing that made me feel better is, the census numbers that we typically get are typically inflated to actual enrollment in the fall. So the numbers I just shared with you typically have been eight to 10 students less enrolled. That's historical data. Doesn't mean that's going to happen here, I'm just, you know, using what has been the practice. What typically happens is that eight or 10 lesser number is mitigated by the kids that are coming in, moving in in the summertime. But we are, and I guess kind of assure this group, on top of this, meaning the principals are very much aware, the support staffs are outstanding, we have some key people there, and that's updated information literally today. Kindergarten numbers.
Any other questions? Obviously, the only thing that I appreciate the fact that you are keeping on top of that, this committee gave you a directive of adding two teachers back then. If this number seems to creep up, that could be another one, so it's more of the fact of what's the comfort level of even a street.
And I don't anticipate health insurance providing us another reduction.
That's what makes me a little bit nervous in that aspect of it.
Absolutely, it's something we're going to have to monitor and watch. Keep it, if I may, Mr. Owens, since we're kind of on the budget, just we met with the Freetown FinCom today, both Ashley, both the director and I, we were down there for about an hour and a half, meeting with FinCom. We had the Board of Selectmen the other night in Freetown, Lakeville, and we basically offered our services at any future meeting. Board of Selectmen, and we do have, obviously, our budget hearing on April 3, here at the school committee, and then we have our regional FinCom right after that. So optimistic that after that budget hearing, hearing from the public, as we did tonight, this committee will be prepared to take action, but also maybe we can get a recommendation from FinCom, regional FinCom as well. No surprises at the FinCom meeting in Freetown today. Multiple questions in relation, again, they were really grateful about the transparency, the continued transparency, and additional information in this year's bulletin.
All right, seeing no further questions, we'll move on. New business, school calendar 2019, 2020, asking for a vote.
I'm moved to approve the new school calendar for 2020.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Do you have a particular question on the calendar?
I just have a question as to why you said the public couldn't speak tonight, that it would have to be the next meeting.
So typically, at the school committee, we have a public participation at the beginning of a meeting, where the public can talk about anything that's on the agenda. This budget itself, the superintendent presents to the public at the next meeting, and there is a full public participation on the budget at that point. So that's where that discussion piece was coming into play. where that discussion piece was coming into play.
But since this is a public meeting anyway, and someone has a question, they just can't come up and ask the question?
Typically, no. Is that the discretion from a chair perspective?
Okay, so there's like, what, five people here?
They can in public participation. It's part of the agenda.
So that has to be at the beginning, when we might not know what's going on and have a question about something later?
That is typically what is transpired, yes. But it's, the chair can actually, and that's why I just opened up for a particular, if it's related to this particular topic. The only thing I'd ask, it maintains that topic. In the past, it's gotten to be a little bit unwieldy. That's why we have this in place. Okay? So, but there is plenty of public participation. This is a topic of the budget. That's what the next meeting is about to do.
And not to defend the, it's common practice throughout the Commonwealth.
Well, no, I understand, but I'm just saying, if someone has a question on what it is, like I had a question on transportation. So this is open to the public, you know, the next meeting. So I would have to wait a month to have my questions answered?
Only a couple.
I mean, if I didn't come up here and know, I mean, I've never been to one of these meetings before, and I guess shame on me for not coming to any. But should I have to wait a month to ask a question?
Typically, that's what public participation is for, for anyone to ask questions in that case. And that's in the, set in the very beginning of the meeting. I know it's a little bit backwards in that, but that's why the agenda is posted beforehand, so that people can review that. You can always send in comments, and we can try to address them there.
And I take public input every day.
Yep. So we have some time. That's why I opened it up to it. But that's, that's why, that's the process.
Well, I just find it interesting, because like, there's really nobody here. And I know that, as you said, there's really not that many people that come to the meeting. So I'm just, I just, okay. I just find that interesting.
We all have email.
That's right.
So if there's a question as well, we all have an available email address, so.
I'm moving on. I'm going to close down the comment, okay? I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we're, we're onto the school calendar.
Well, as I'm watching the way people are talking, so I just figured I'd come back and address the question. But that's all right. Don't worry about it. I'll wait till next month, and then I'll come back.
So I have a motion and a second on the school calendar. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed. I simply would note, this is the hot topic right now from families. If anyone's there waiting, I'm actually including in the superintendent's corner and letting people know, people are already making their plans for next year. Families are reaching out. So it's timely. It will be on the website, pending, obviously, the approval tonight. It'll be on the website, hopefully as early as tomorrow. I'll include in my superintendent's corner, I'm highlighting the fact that the action was taken. So I do know that there are a lot of families.
Just a point of clarification. This wasn't really a vote on the school committee meetings, right? Even though it's part of this?
I think you still need a separate action taken on that.
But it is on this calendar, so everyone can see.
For public consumption, yeah.
Yes. Unless your color's lined, you can't tell the colors. But then, on that, we're good.
So who would that be?
So are the schools, so?
School committee meetings are highlighted on here.
I know that.
Typically, you've taken formal action on that when the board, when you've come together with the election, is what normally is happening.
That's right.
The new chair, vice chair, you then make sure everybody, even if there's no changes, you know, that, so that's typically, would actually probably be at the next school committee meeting.
Seven B, Reed's, S C E C Board of Director.
So we are members of both South Coast and Reed's Collaboratives, and you'll see the attached documents. I've actually left them for the chair to sign. It'd be my recommendation.
Representative of South Coast Collaborative.
I have a motion and a second. I'm assuming this is for both, or are we just handling independently?
We can put them together.
But that's fine, for both Reed's and South Coast Collaborative.
I don't think it's an issue, but just to be safe, I would request that we just keep them separately. Because they ask for minutes for both, and then each director sends it to the state.
So I heard a motion, a second on the South Coast. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage to the end. And then for the motion of Reed's Collaborative?
I like that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Congratulations.
Okay, school improvement plans. We have given the midseason update. Typically, if we've had a chance to review.
I didn't receive any questions, if there are items.
Yeah, we discussed last that there are any concerns that we would bring the respective principals back in to have that discussion, if necessary. But I'll open for the board any questions or comments on what was presented.
Want to comment? Is that like the templates, we can be coming together better?
And it's, and I assumed I didn't, I apologize, I'd be remiss if I didn't. We had one absent piece for personal and professional reasons for this time. I'll be able to provide an update through that principal at a later date. I think everybody respects and understands that. But I, you're remiss, I didn't actually include that in any correspondence, too.
I just had a question. Maybe Marlene can answer. The, the assessments for the iReady Math and the reading assessments, do you know how well those tend to correlate with MCAS results?
Yes, actually, we do. So the iReady itself, they have done the research, actually, the Curriculum Associates is the vendor that does iReady, and they're actually working with the Department of Education right now to, to do that actual study. They asked us to participate and for me to give the MCAS data from some of our students so that they could correlate, but I chose not to do that. So they are using other districts to do that study, that correlation right now. They have some.
You've been to previous meetings, Dr. Korea, to make that determination, didn't you?
I was not putting that on my report to bring here. So they are in the process of actually doing more specific studies with that. And we have done some of our own correlations here in district, just with the principals and myself, so that we can see that we are, that we can pinpoint from that iReady data and from the benchmark data that we're using. The grade assessment is one of the ones that we use in second and third grade, and we have actually done our own research here, where we've looked at the MCAS scores and correlated it to typical, if a student scores between a seven and a nine, stay nine, for example, on the grade, what does that look like in an MCAS score, when you see their MCAS scores? And there is a strong correlation.
Because they've made some great gains.
Yes. So one of the things we've done this year, talk about interventions, when we've been discussing the double dose and the interventions, is we have the iReady diagnostic. So when the kids get on the diagnostic and they, what happens is the diagnostic actually gives them a score for different domains in math. And then we've purchased with the support of a grant, what we call the online instructional tool. And we've pinpointed through data meetings which students should be on that online instructional tool. And so they go online, maybe during a math center time, and that tool takes them right where they left off on their diagnostic through instructional lessons. So it's kind of a double dose in addition to what they get in the classroom with the teacher. And I was just telling teachers today, those kids can use their licenses in the summer as well, so they can do it at home and use those, continue those lessons throughout the summer. And so we have seen, we piloted last year with a few classrooms, and we looked at the gains, and we thought that they were significant enough gains for us to purchase more licenses this year.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a comment. And I've been, I've been vocal about this. I just, and Marlene, you did a great job, and I'm sure you could speak for, for any of these school improvement plans. So thank you. I just think it says something for, for the principals of the district to be able to come and present their school improvement plan. I understand it's not our purview anymore. I get it. But they are the face of the school, and they are doing some great work. And I think it's just a, a, a nice opportunity for them to step up and talk about it. And I'm sure they can go into as great of a job as Marlene did. I'm sure they could go into a lot more detail that we might be wondering. So I'm just, again, if you, I'm still, I would love to hear from them. The more, the better. And I'm not trying to pull them away from their families for another night. But that's just my thoughts and my comments. So, thank you.
I would support that. I like the accountability piece to that, given for personal reasons, but both professional. I think it lines up nice as the face of the school for accountability reasons. But again, would never want somebody to be taken away from their family for a night. But, but I do think it sends a strong message throughout the district at every level. And I just had a question on the district. I love the update with the highlights, but there was one, the MCAS parent night. Is there one scheduled? I just, is there a date for that? I think it's on page 10 on the.
On the high school?
Yeah, it's page 10 on this one. Maybe it just got missed. Host, parent, guardian meeting regarding MCAS tips, resources.
I didn't have to get back, I mean, get back to stuff.
Do we feel that we need to, I know Will had brought this up, but do we feel that we need to bring in any of the principals to sort of highlight any of these? I know we, last meeting, we decided as a group not to do that, but we have the option to do if we found anything concerning in that. Reports to the committee. We always get to hear from.
I don't have anything else to share tonight.
Nothing.
Really?
Dr. Korea.
Sure. So our last PD was a half day on March 7, and we invited Sarah Ward from Cognitive Connections here. She does a lot with executive functioning. If you talk about executive functioning, you usually hear people say you should have Sarah Ward. She's that well-known. And we were able to have her in district, and she did a very nice presentation for our staff members about helping students with time management, with just organization in general, helping them to focus. She gave them some very practical strategies, and I'm very pleased to report that I've seen a lot of teachers using those strategies in the last couple of weeks. The principals have even commented to me that they've seen a lot of the strategies being put in place. Some teachers have even created different agenda books for their students at the intermediate school based on strategies she's shared with us. She gave us a PowerPoint presentation, and we're looking at, hopefully, the PD committee. I think there is already talk on the PD committee of trying to get her back next year to do some work with individual teachers or small groups of teachers who have very specific questions about particular things that they could use. So she was excellent and very well-received. I know some of you went to the new look of nicotine addiction. I think a few of you on the board were here at the high school presentation, and they also did a presentation for the staff at the high school and the middle school as well. And the middle school had, is having a parent night, and they're also coming to do some work with the students, a presentation for, for the students at the middle school as well. As I said, our PD committee is already up and running to get planning for next year. We have a meeting, actually, tomorrow is our second meeting. We had our first meeting a few weeks ago. And the groups are in place. There are about 21 staff members who are planning for professional development for next year already. And we've had a lot of excitement around authors the last couple of weeks. I'm really excited to say, because it's something I think is really important for the kids to see, an actual author here working with them in their schools. So at Assawamset, we had someone named Meg Kearney, who wrote a book about trooper, which is a dog that she fostered that only has three legs. And she, she came and she did a presentation to the second and third graders at Assawamset. She also worked with them on writing poetry about Lakeville. So it was really interesting. They did one together, and then they did some of their own. In that Freetown Elementary School, we had a nonfiction author named Kate Narita, who did 100 Bugs. So she did something with the whole school, and then she met individually with each grade level and did some writing workshops with them. And then we were really fortunate, because I booked this gentleman before he just became really famous. Brian Lees does the Bats at the Library, Bats at the Ballgame books. But he just wrote a book, he wrote a book called A Rough Patch and illustrated it. And he just won the Caldecott Honor. So for those of you who know, that's a book, you know, an honor for the illustrations. We were lucky, I'd already booked him, so the price was, the price went up, and he won that honor. But he spent two days with us at Grace. He did workshops for fourth grade, writing workshops, where he actually wrote with the students, and he had them write, too, and share. And then he did the same thing the next day with fifth grade. And he was, for our Title One Family Night that we had, he did the presentation for families that night. We gave away his books to all the kids who came to Title One Family Night. It was a great evening, and he shared a little bit. He's very humble about his award, and he shared a lot about writing with the kids. And he did a little PD with the teachers. And we had one of the, two of the fourth grade girls actually interviewed him, had lunch with him, and interviewed him for this, for the newspaper at Grace. So watch for that, because I'm sure it'll be a great article. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you is, the Department of Ed sent something called the Seal of Biliteracy. It's something that they're offering, and it's an optional piece. What, what the Department of Ed is saying is, if we have students at the high school level upon graduation who are competent in two languages, they can receive this official seal, this insignia, on their transcript or their diploma or both. The way that a student shows competence in the two languages is they would get, you know, a passing score on MCAS and exceed, there's a cutoff score. So it has to be higher than just passing. And then they would take either the AP exam and the language that they're studying, the second language, or they could take another, there's another exam that they could take. And if they pass with a cutoff score, they would receive that seal on their transcript or their diploma or both. So I wanted to bring that to you, because it is voluntary. I have talked to Dr. Starkey, who's in favor. I have talked to our ESL teacher, who would be part of the process, and also with the curriculum leader for languages here at the high school. We had a meeting, we talked about it, we went away, gathered some more information, came back, and they are all in agreement that they would like to go forward if we have your consent. I asked Mr. Medias today, I didn't know if it's something you need to take action on, because it would go on their transcript. I wasn't sure what the process should be.
Are we, it may be challenging on the diploma because of the fact of the time.
The timing for the AP exam. So we talked about that. If they take the AP exam, we don't get the scores back and time to put it on their diploma, it would go on their transcript.
So we're just saying on the transcript?
Right. But they can choose to take, there is a different online test, and it costs $15. And they can take that, if they choose to, ahead of time of the AP exam, or in lieu of the AP exam. And that would, that would suffice. The Department of Ed has given us several tests that are considered. Incredible. So then, then they could get it on. I, I feel like it almost should just go on the transcript itself, because how many people see your diploma?
Right.
But most people, right, employers, et cetera, see your transcript.
That's true.
And if they're applying to graduate school. I mean, I do think it's nice for them to be recognized as having that seal. And it can be vice versa. It can be students who come to us already, very proficient in a different language, and then they, they're our English language learners, and then they become proficient in English.
See, I don't have a problem. If I had that, I'd tap it everywhere. I think I'd get a tattoo.
Me, too.
So the question I have, though, is with the diploma, could we hand out like a fake diploma and get, have an option to give them the diploma later? You know, give it to them at college?
Yeah, like college.
Just, just as a thought. I think it's just great to have everywhere. I wish I was bilingual.
It certainly helps with, you know, job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Opportunities.
I'm sure we can coordinate that after the fact as well and return it.
We can figure this out. This is phenomenal. I can't believe that it's taken Desi this long to figure it out, that being bilingual and multilingual is an incredibly valuable asset in a global economy and locally. So, you know, I applaud this, and I really would, I would hope that it would be embraced by the students, because I'm sure we have quite a few. And we're going to have more as time goes on. Again, I'll go back to that demographics.
Absolutely. And we agreed that we would probably use some grant funding to help offset the costs for any students who are economically disadvantaged and couldn't afford the AP exam, which we do already anyway.
Yeah.
Or if they chose to take the $15 exam, we would offset the costs with the grants.
I don't think there's any.
No dissension here, but if you want to vote, we can do it.
It's not required if you want to simply do the vote in support.
I see there's no objection. Go with it.
Okay, thank you.
The administration should make that determination.
That's it.
Subcommittee updates. Superintendent Valuation goals? Oh, did I, oh, I'm sorry.
Liz is probably okay with it, but I do want to point out that the Director of Student Services.
There's some exciting things beside the budget, so.
My apologies. Go ahead.
That's okay, just a few items. So one of the, some of the feedback I received when I first came here surrounded our transition for students who are going from one school to the next. And of course, we have the extra transition with Grace. We have already started the transition process for those students. So families have received letters inviting them to come to a transition meeting, and those are being scheduled as we speak. So the families will have an opportunity to sit with, you know, the staff and teachers that know their child, and then the staff that will be receiving their child. So generally, we're going to have a special educator and also adjustment counselor, you know, depending, guidance there. So that will be a. So that will be a benefit to students and also their families.
Those are always during the school day.
Yes, they are.
So that's tough for working parents. Do we have any accommodation? Because that's an important, I just want to say, that's an important step, the transition step, and it would be probably helpful for a number of parents if there was some additional flexibility, not that I want to keep you home from dinner either, but it just.
My dinner is fine, but it would just be involved a cost.
A lot of staff.
Right, exactly. So, we do, if, if a, if family needs to, you know, change a time, my office works with, families are on scheduling, you know, for team meetings and transition meetings as well, so. In terms of the next item, Special Olympics, so we are getting a district team this year, we're going to provide transportation for Special Olympics, which is going to be held on May 17th at 9:00 in the morning. We're going to have opening ceremonies, everything will take place at Dartmouth High School, you're more than welcome to attend, I'm sure we'll have a lot of volunteers that day. The students will participate in the various activities, and then at the end, which is around noon time, they will have an award ceremony and then a luncheon, and then we'll transport the students back here to campus, and they will, that will be their day. There's a rain date of the Monday, the 20th, if for some reason, May 17th is, tends to be raining. Also, in terms of planning, we have already started our, well into our extended school year planning, so we are compiling a list of students and staff so that we have everything back to the parents on the locations, the teachers, and all of those important details for families in advance of extended school year. Ongoing, we have, the next CPAC meeting is May 7th. I know that Dr. Korea and I have discussed that we will be getting a social emotional speaker to go along with our curriculum and sort of highlight on social emotional learning with parent-friendly tips around that. So we'll be working with CPAC to set a time and location, and those details will be coming shortly. And lastly, we have our audit district enrollment, so you can see the March numbers there.
Any questions?
Last year, it was last year or the year before, the, we, there was photo shared of the Special Olympics, if that's possible, that's great, it was nice to see. We got photos a couple years ago, so if you.
You had a police escort, if you recall, from one of the schools.
Right, so, right, so if that's possible, it's always nice to see.
Sure, good suggestion.
Any other questions? Again, my apologies.
That's okay.
Now, I'll go on. We've already done 9A, Super and End of the Policy Committee, we, we're struggling to get to J, the alphabet.
We're working hard.
Yeah, so, and then Regional FinCom, our next meeting.
April 11.
April 11. I think we're going to try and schedule one before then, just so that we can stay on target for a recommendation from the Regional FinCom for the full school committee to make that vote, so I'm hopeful for that. Any other business to come properly before the meeting?
I just want to compliment Dr. Korea and Dr. Starkey on the vaping program. Steve and I attended it, I thought it was outstanding. First of all, it was concise, it was 45 minutes. The gala put it on, was articulate, she had her props, she was passing around different items, I learned a lot. I would love to see, and I know it's a lot to ask the administration, but I would love to see it as a community event for both communities, perhaps in the fall, because I think this is so new, I have, I have this all here in case anybody wants to look at it. I think it's so new that people don't have any idea the dangers in it. I certainly didn't. My husband didn't, and I was with a group of adults, 40 to 65, and they were dumbfounded when I was telling them what I had learned in 45 minutes. Did Steve, did anything else?
I agree, I mean, it's just, it was quality PD, quality overruns of parents, and that's why I asked that MCAS parent night question, just that homeschool relationship is so important. But the speaker was phenomenal, and I thought Mr. Higgins and Dr. Starkey were great, because they anecdotally shared some stuff about the school and just situations they've had, but it, but it's certainly eye-opening, and the general message from Dr. Starkey about spreading awareness was, was amazing, so it was, it was good, good.
And the best part of it, it was free.
Right.
Right.
So we could, I mean, I kind of pictured, I'd be happy to work with someone on this, I picture going to the churches and to the Board of Selectmen and to our Boards of Health in both communities, and get adults on board on what this is all about, because there's a lot that we can do community-wise to at least try to hold back the waves. Well done.
Good suggestion.
Anything else? Before we, our next meeting is April 3rd, that is the public budget presentation. It is also going to be our School Committee reorg for that night, so I wanted to, just to thank the committee as a whole for their support of my being chair the last few months, I hope I at least met expectations, if not exceeded them. But I will, with that being said, I'll move on to number 11, for the committee to move into executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the director of curriculum and central office staff, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, we will not return to open session. I have a motion of second, will be your roll call.
Steve Owen?
Here.
Jay Cox?
Yeah.
Sherri Barron?
Here.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
Derek Brashen?
Yeah, yes.
Laura Ramsden?
Yes.
Phil Stinklin?
Yes.
Yes.